Me too. We're walking to you. She's calling too.
Yeah.
We have the call to order. Welcome to the regular council meeting, Bossier City Chambers. It is Tuesday, June 4th, 2024, 3:00 PM. We'll have the invocation by Councilmember Chris Smith, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Don Williams.
Let us pray, dear heavenly Father, we come to you, Lord, today thanking you for our many blessings. Lord, we pray that you will be with us today in these chambers, Lord. We'll also pray for a little bit of dry weather. Seem to be getting a lot of rain. Pray that you'll be with each and every one of us, and you'll address each of our needs as we need them. Lord, be with us as we conduct the business of the city of Bossier City. In your holy name I pray. Amen.
Let's face the flag, repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Real call?
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Maggio?
Here.
All present. Counsel, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings laws and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the City Council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda items may approach and state their names and address for the record, and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion, with up to four speakers per side. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or who shall become boisterous while addressing the council, shall be forthwith by the president pro temp, barred from further audience before the council, unless permission to continue be granted by a majority vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. No question shall be asked to councilperson or the mayor, except through the meeting chair. All other audience members are asked to observe the meeting quietly. City Council has appointed the city marshals as the sergeant-at-arms, and they have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting.
All right. Any ceremonial matters or recognition of guests?
Yes, sir.
Counsel, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Williams. Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, counsel, I'll need a motion to approve the minutes of May 21st, 2024, regular council meeting, and dispense with the reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Hammond. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Witness opening of sealed bids for P24-04 On-Demand Concrete Repairs for Utilities Department.
Good afternoon, counsel, Mayor Chandler.
Afternoon.
The bids today are for the on-demand concrete repairs for the Utilities Department. The engineer's estimate is around $250,000, and this was approved by the general budget in ordinance 130 of 2023.
Brooke, you got this one right, huh?
We'll see.
I'm sorry, just kidding.
So the first bid is from A and H Building and Construction. And they have a cashier's check in lieu of the bid bond. There was one addendum on the project, and it was acknowledged. Their bid is for $246,750, And the next bid is from H&amp;H Contracting. They do have their bid bond, and they did acknowledge the addendum. Their bid is for $278,700. That's 278,700. I ask that you approve the reading of these bids.
So moved. So moved.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Smith. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Public hearings, action on unfinished business. Adopting ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute an agreement with Tyler Technologies for processing payments for the Bossier City diversion program. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Thank you. Motion carries. Adopting ordinance appropriating the sum of $280,000 from the EMS Capital Fund for the purchase of supplemental radio equipment for the Bossier City Police Department. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to amend ordinance 120 of 2022 to appropriate an additional $150,000 for improvements to the lateral B1 drainage canal, to come from the Riverboat Gaming Capital Fund. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Williams. Smith. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
New business?
Adopting ordinance amending ordinance number 133 of 2018 by changing the zoning classification of a certain tract of land being .4790 acres, more or less, from RMD residential medium density to B2 limited business located at 1329 Airline Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana, for proposed daycare facility. First and final reading, and favorable by MPC.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City, which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement to replace a gravity sewer main segment on Delhi Street that collapsed at a cost of $90,050, to come from the Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Mr. Williams, did yours pop up?
Yep. I thought I hit it.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to enter into the attached amended local services agreement with the parish of Bossier, and to execute any documents and foderance thereof. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
Mr. President, would like for the Assistant Attorney to give a brief on that, just thumbnail.
Councilman Darby, it's my understanding that this agreement is executed every year that documents the projects that the city and the parish are cooperating on, I believe, especially for capital purposes. I think because money is being spent, it's, it has to be executed every year. This is the first year that I've drafted this version of it, but I, as best I can tell, every year, the ongoing projects get added to it, and, and it, and it's an ever-growing list. But if you look at it, the ones from the last few years were the same way. It's just that e- each project that is, that the city and the parish are cooperating on are listed. Okay. But I think it's a, I think it, it's just a formal agreement that has to be done because money's being spent, and I believe it's, some of these would be capital-outlay type projects, so.
Okay. So it's just housekeeping?
It is, yes. I guess I could have lived with that, sorry.
Thank you, okay.
I have a question, Mr. President. Richard, most of, I mean, just about every, I mean, I don't see anything that is in the city limits of Bossier that is on this list. Is, is there, there, there a reason? I mean, everything, everything in here is out in the parish. I mean, Johnson Corian Road, Cycle Plant Road, that, that's actually in Benton. Would that not be the, the town of Benton that would need to do that with them? I mean, it just seems, I don't know, kind of irrelevant that we're, we're in this cooperative endeavor agreement with them, but it's really not benefiting the city of Bossier, for say.
Well, I think that the parish has to file the same ordinance. But I'd, maybe, I don't know if, if engineering can help me with any, any of the new projects, but I just know that there's new projects that have to be added to it, and every year we have to add the new things.
I took a look at it briefly, Councilman Hammond, and it, it's pretty well been the same document for a long, long time. And so, from that perspective, I think it's just some housekeeping on the part of the police jury to further whatever initiatives they have. Y'all are aware of, of the projects that we're pushing for Bossier, and Yeah. You know, that there would be, you know, some synergy in having, you know, maybe the police jury cooperate, you know, enter into an agreement with the things that we need here in Bossier as well. But from the perspective of that document, it's just a, it's like an annual thing they're doing every year, right or wrong. That's what it is.
Okay. Well, I guess, I guess my big question would be if, for some reason, they have one of these projects going on, and we have a cooperative endeavor agreement with them, for some reason they didn't pay, are we on the hook?
To my knowledge, no.
I don't think we've done nothing, as far as financially it was with the jury in quite some time.
We've done some things. I mean, the latest things that we've done, of course, they want to do improvements to 71 South around Parkway High School, and we've cooperated with them on that. And then Benton Road is another big project. They're north of I-220, and we've entered into an agreement, actually done an ordinance for funding on that. But to my knowledge, this, this, if they were funding, going to be allocated, that would be under separate instrument.
And there are quite a few, Councilman Hammond, that are in the city, that because these are capital projects with capital money that, you know, are over a long period of time, over perhaps the life of a bond, there's, there's a lot in here, just looking at it. There's a lot in, in the city. And I apologize, I don't have a list right in front of me of whatever the new ones were that we, that were added to this one.
Yeah, I mean, I see some stuff now on further down. They've got Walter O'Bigby Carriage Way, the water main project, Kroger Market Place, they've got some other stuff in here.
It, it's typically long-term projects, and I think that they just have to be listed, and anything that's new has to be added, and every year it has to be put to the council and ratified.
All right. Any more questions? All right. Additional questions, counsel? Please cast your vote.
My computer froze up. I'm a yay.
Motion carries. Introducing an ordinance to eliminate an equipment operator one position in the Streets and Drainage Department for Public Works, and amend the General Fund and Public Services and Sanitation Fund budgets to transfer funds from the Streets and Drainage Department to the Streets and Grass Cutting Department for salaries and benefits. First reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Darby. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Did yours still out?
No, I'm still froze.
Are you a yay or a nay?
I'm a yay.
Motion carries.
It'll come up, but I'm just gonna do anything.
Introducing an ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached joint cooperative endeavor agreement with the city of Shreveport and the Caddo Bossier Parish's Port Commission. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience?
David Crockett, 653 Du Main Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. I had, I mean, the agreement seems pretty benign when you look at it, but I do have some questions. Question to the mayor and to the Public Affairs Office. This is a pretty significant agreement, if it's ever turned on. There have been no press releases. It would have been nice to hear something from the city, so some of the questions may have been asked, if there was an opportunity to bring in some local press and break this down a little bit. The second question is, why was this not discussed when the other CEA was brought into effect by the city? Surely this was being considered at the time, and I think it would have been worthy to have discussed it then, so I'd love to see some discussion in the council about that. And I think the other thing that, in general, how does this relate to the other cooperative mandate, CEA that was voted on? If this is turned on for some reason, I remember in the previous discussions, once the water is turned on, then the city would be obligated to continue to pay for the pipes that were installed. So I think some of those questions, I think, could be answered for the city. I don't see how it's covered in here, how this relates to the other CEA, so I think the council ought to owes the people explanation. I'd love to hear a press release and mayor. I think that these are big issues. Please start to address them ahead of time, and we'll know more when we come and talk to the city council about it. Thank you.
All right. Any additional public comments? Any questions from the council?
Mr. President, since this is the first reading, maybe we can get another informational statement from the attorney.
Sure. Councilman Darby, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, and I did share an email last week when this was added. It's my understanding that the Louisiana Department of Health has recommended that there be a cooperative endeavor agreement like this specifically related to the standard operating procedure that would be used in the event that emergency water usage has to be used at the port by one of the water systems. Essentially, as the council knows, there's going to be, when the water line from Bossier City is complete, there will be two different water systems terminating at the port of Caddo Bossier. That's the city of Bossier Water System and the city of Shreveport Water System. And the city of Shreveport has existing tenants who are on city of Shreveport water, and the city of Bossier will service tenants in the future in a, on the property of the port. And it's important to know that this is related only to the footprint of the port. And this would be a document that is entered into between three entities, city of Shreveport, city of Bossier, and the port, where the, by those entities are agreeing to follow a specific procedure. And it makes sense when you think about it. You have two different water systems. In the event, like several years ago, there was an ice event, and there are large tenants at the port, and, and because the water system lost pressure, then they did not have water for, for some period of time. In this instance, because you have two different water systems in an emergency situation like that, they can follow the steps and close off the valves for one water system, and then open the valves in the appropriate order that the engineers laid out, in order to provide emergency water to the tenants that are on the system that has lost pressure. And it, and it's important to know, it could go either way. It could be that the Bossier system loses pressure for some reason, and the Shreveport water system has to service the Bossier tenants. It's just that there's a backup in place. If Bossier water is used, it, Bossier will be paid for it. If Shreveport water is used, Shreveport will be paid for it. But this is another, I would call it a housekeeping document that was required by Louisiana Department of Health, because you get two water systems terminating at the same place, and best practices dictates that you have some procedure that says who's going to turn what valve, and where are they going to turn them, and that we have engineers that know what they're doing to lay it out. And the difference between this is that, and the, the other cooperative endeavor agreement, that one was between the city of Bossier and the port itself on the water line to the port. City of Shreveport was not a party to that prior CEA, and they would not have been a party to it. But they have to be a party to this one, because it's two different water systems. And this has been vetted by the city of Shreveport, and they have authorized it. The port has authorized it. It was something that LDH recently made us aware of, so we've complied and put it together, and worked together with Shreveport and the port, and presented to the council.
Mr. Attorney, is there a difference in the port and Caddo? Like if, when you say the port, are we talking about the city of Shreveport or Caddo Parish?
Caddo Parish is not a party to this. It's only the city of Shreveport, because that's the water system. The city of Bossier, that's the other water system, and the port of, it's, it, the technical name is Caddo, Caddo Bossier Parish's Port Commission, but that's the port.
Right, and the
Actually, some of the port is in Bossier Parish.
Yes.
Even on the Shreveport side of the river, some of it's in Bossier Parish.
And the, and the port management does not fall under the parish government of Caddo?
No. No. My understanding is it does not. It's its own entity.
It's its own political subdivision.
Yeah. That's, that's what I wanted to be certain about. I, I, I think I knew that, but saying it out loud is even more advantageous to the discussion. Okay, all right. Thank you for that information.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from the council?
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Oshinbach, is it, my understanding, I mean, the, I know we have boarded the river, but that water line is not even ready yet to be used. Am I correct?
Close. But the river's bored.
Yeah.
They got, we're working currently on boring Highway 1. So the, the main driver on supplying that water is for the port to be able to prospect tenants on the west side of Highway 1. The alternative connection to Shreveport's line has always been something that we've conceptualized. The port, after, it's been more than one ice storm, there's been three of them, one every year, and I think, subsequent to that, the port's decided that they would like to offer their tenants an alternative emergency supply on the east side of Highway 1, if and when that would be needed. So this is what that document covers.
But we're not, we're not even tied into that yet.
No, sir.
Okay. How much further from where we boarded the river into that would we have to go?
It's, we cross it.
Okay, we cross, okay.
When we cross Highway 1, they have a man right there at Highway 1, so we, we cross their lines. It's a, it's truthfully pretty convenient to, to make that happen.
So it's basically no different than what we do at Markstall Air Force Base?
Correct.
Thank you.
One, one thing I wanted to ask, Ben, is the agreement renewed yearly, or is this for a certain term, this, this agreement?
This is a 99-year agreement.
Okay, this is a long one, okay.
Between the entities.
All right, yeah, so.
It's in section 1.03.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't mean to step over you. I just happened to be looking at it.
I didn't know it offhand anyway, so thank you for asking.
Okay. So it's a long-term agreement, okay.
Well, that's the maximum length. If it could be longer, we would make it longer, but, but it's.
Any additional questions?
Thank you all.
All right, counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Hammond, this yours working?
Uh, yeah, did, did it pop up?
Yes, sir, you did.
Okay.
Motion carries. Approve Bossier Press Tribune as the city of Bossier City's official journal for July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, in accordance with Louisiana Revised Statute 43:141.
So moved.
Second.
Hammond, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Reports.
Oh, I'm sorry, we did. Mr. Ben Oshinbach, Engineering Department, monthly project report. I'm not used to him being on this schedule.
He was out of town last week, last time.
Update from Todd on the Carriage Way, I know it's same thing, but there has been a fair amount of action over the last month plus. Good afternoon, counsel. This page really hasn't changed since the last update I gave you all. So, again, 84 million in ongoing design and construction, 66 million of that currently under construction, with the majority of that being the Carriage Way. Got a lot of projects queued up in the till, some of those moving out of bid into construction, six projects under construction, and then three subdivisions. I think that's kind of a stretch, honestly. Most of the subdivision work that we're working on is coming to a close. So the Carriage Way, just real quickly, the only update there is they're running around 94% complete. I think y'all have seen the latest traffic disruption there on Benton Road, where we're putting in the raised medians, and they'll be working. There's some work to do on the east side. So northbound Eastside Lane, they've got to put in some curb improvements there as well. So more to come, but they did a good job. They put those medians in in, in less than a week. But they're still tracking ahead of schedule, around 94% complete, with 91% of the time elapsed. I haven't got a pay application in here. You guys can see what's going on out there. They are killing it. I'm just calling it on schedule, but my suspicion is, once I get that pay application, they'll be well ahead of schedule. Street improvement project, we're coming to a close, around 88% complete there. About 81% of the time has elapsed, and they're sitting around two weeks ahead of schedule on completing that work. And we're actively working on 2024. We have a meeting today on that. Airline Drive overlay, believe it or not, we're showing that as 67% complete, and just about everybody out there would tend to argue that that's done. It's a working day contract, 30% of their time has elapsed. They're about 44 days ahead, but we still have some signal work to do at the intersection of Wimpel, and we can't complete that work until that infrastructure is delivered. And like everything else, it's a long lead time. But having driven out there, it's, it's awesome. That was a big improvement. Walbrook Park, notice proceed. Their time started Monday, so they're getting geared up. I've got them 1% complete, 1% of the time elapsed there. More to come. They'll be demoing the old building. Hopefully, some of this rain will blow out. We can continue on our aggressive schedule here, but we're moving forward with that project. And then the traffic signal upgrade, I'm calling that on schedule. The vast majority of the hardware is installed, the software is installed. We met today with IT. The vast majority of the hardware, um, is installed, the software is installed, we met today with IT, uh, still working through integration things and communication things. But, but the big bulk of that project's complete. That's the private development, I know this is a laundry list of projects, I gave you guys a hard copy of this as well as a spreadsheet that kind of enumerates some of the other projects, just to keep that in your folio, but, um, making a lot of progress. Still working on Bardo and Montgomery Lane, um, we're finalizing easement acquisition very close and we'll be putting that one out to bid. Lateral B one, y'all finalize the improvements or the additional funding for that, um, so we'll be putting that out to bid here, um, very shortly. Uh, we're well underway on the citywide street improvements, I've met with all five, uh, council districts, uh, we're putting together our plan, um, on that. Citywide striping, we're working through that, one of the locations, just so y'all are aware, will be to redo the striping on Airline Drive just south of where we completed the asphalt project so that all of that gets cleaned up and freshened up. Brownlee Road's under design, Golden Meadows, um, I checked with purchasing, we're waiting to get the contracts back from the contractor and then we'll be moving into construction on that. Benton Road, southbound turn lanes under design, um, Carriage Oaks drainage improvements, the design's complete. Uh, we have a few pieces of easement, mostly construction access that we're going to need to work with the city's legal department, you'll see some stuff on that, Richard, in the coming days, but, um, we'll engage our team that typically handles that. Louisiana watershed project, uh, we formalized the, um, request for proposals, I put some information on Amanda's desk today to get that pushed through. The transportation alternative grant project, we had a big solicitation of views, which is like a reach out to all the various agencies for their comments, that's done. Uh, we sent all of that to DOTD and we're waiting for their remarks back. Council on Aging, um, had a long conversation with Councilman Darby, um, Councilman Smith was involved in our last meeting and I know, Bubba, you couldn't be there, but we've got another meeting coming up in about a month. Still working through what I'm calling new or the use of existing facility ideas. We were tasked with understanding better how much Bozier City pays, um, to operate the facility that Council on Aging currently occupies. And we're, that's an action item of us to be able to share that with the group, um, at our next meeting, so we'll be doing that. Viking Drive Drainage Project, survey's complete, uh, the design has started there, um, chiller replacement, uh, that design is underway and then the I two twenty Shed Road lighting is still a ways away due to funding. Any questions, gentlemen?
Yeah, Mr. Oshinbach, do you think the Highway seventy-one turn lane will be complete before the kids go back to school?
No.
No?
No, I do not. I hope we'll have a nice mess out there by the time they go back to school.
That's what I was.
Some of y'all may know the, the railroad crossing at Shed Road going towards I twenty, that's a mess, are y'all aware of that, Jeff, maybe Councilman?
What, is there a train stop there?
No, it's a crawl, like, it's a messed up crossing, um, and it's bad. It's so bad that, you know, people's tires are getting beat up, runs are getting beat up, things like that, so, um, that, we'll probably have to close show, Shed Road down at some point later this summer to get that done, but that's a big project that needed to happen for, forever, um, it's not the city's, it's the railroad's responsibility, but anyway.
Is that the one, Mr. Schwartz?
I think so, yeah.
I had a question on Benton Road with the newly installed raised curbs, whatever you want to call it. Scott's audio, you're familiar with that building?
Yes, sir.
He's been there, I don't know, twenty-five or thirty years and he now, you cannot make a left-hand turn in his business. I mean, if you're heading north, how do you get into his business, you can't. I've never in my life seen someone, um, be, I mean, a, a longstanding business taxpayer. We actually, whoever it is, just by God, go out there and build a wall and say you can't get into the man's business. I, I went out there and walked with him today and I, I don't know how, how did that happen? I mean, and I know it's not you and we all know the origins, but I don't think that's legal. I mean, is that right, Richard? I mean, you're telling a man that he can't, I mean, imagine y'all, you have a business, all right, and you're headed north on Benton Road and all of a sudden they build a wall out there and say, you, that traffic can't get to the man's business, there's no way to get there. That, that just can't be, I mean, and, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm just, I think that it was a big enough thing for it to be brought up at this council meeting, you know, that and to you that legally, I think we should force DOTD to take out the curbs in front of his access to allow someone to get in there, I mean, am I correct in that?
I think at least, what, what's the road, there's a road right there, Citizens Bank Drive is going to connect and come back around?
Can't get to him.
You cannot get to his business that way, I got a call from Mr. Boswell too and actually a customer that was leaving his shop today about what it took him to get into that business now that the, um, the raised curb is there.
Well, you got to go down and make a U-turn at, at Green Acres Office Park, that's your.
That's your, that's, that's the only way.
Or if you, if you took a, if you're heading north, if I'm right, and you take a left on Citizens Bank, won't it come back around, it's going to connect, it's not going to connect?
There's no, it connects to Green Acres Office Park.
Right.
But there's no connection to, uh, Scott's audio, that's a vacant.
No, 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 I understand, I'm just saying that it's not a perfect solution, that's what I guess you're calling a U-turn, you got to go back around there and get back on Benton Road and then go back in.
You got to go north to Green Acres Office Park and turn in there and come back out and then head south. And even when Citizens Bank Drive is done, it, you've got the area and then you got the pump station, right? Sitting right there, I mean, literally the man is landlocked to northbound traffic. And then, quite honestly, I don't know how people, like, when they're leaving, they have to go south. And they can't make a U-turn at the light, so then, I guess eventually they would go down Citizens Bank Drive and then come back out at Green Acres Office Park. But I mean, I think, it, it's, I just believe that there has to be a solution to that man's problem. And, and again, I'm repeating myself, but it was important enough to let him know that we care about every business in this city.
And I'll just say that my understanding of the history of it, it was a DOTD thing because they're going to come along and put that curbing on the east side, you know, that's the next phase and that was part of, you know, um, but DOTD, it's my understanding DOTD.
We knew that.
Required it, yeah, but they, but they required that raised median as well, didn't they, as part of the project?
Yeah, yes, sir.
But we, I, I never remember in all the years that we've been working on this, them saying that they were going to block a man's business from northbound traffic.
The same median that's, that's preventing people southbound from getting to the businesses on the east side of Highway three is, is preventing people.
Well, but you put a sign up saying no left turn if you're heading south. I mean, I, I get it, but I mean, it, we have to do something. I mean, and I don't know what legal means we have to take it out, I mean, I, I can't see if a judge saying that the man's business is going to be shut down without paying him. If it ended up in court, am I correct?
Yes, it'd be a, you know, I don't want to really give a good opinion on it right here or say what, what I would.
Well, I'll, I'll give my opinion.
But I mean, I, it would be a problematic thing if I were that business, but it's the same issue that the other businesses around there are saying it's DOTD required.
We own them, we own those buildings, with the exception of that one, and, and they have egress.
Right.
This man does not.
Right. I understand, if we can get together afterwards and, and get with him, I, I'd never thought about that, I mean, I, I'm glad that you're bringing it to everybody's opinion, I mean, uh, attention.
You have time after this to meet?
Certainly.
Thank you all, any other questions?
I do, but I, I'll get with you afterwards.
Thank you all.
Being easy on you.
Ben's about to have a long afternoon.
So I have one, Mr. President?
Thank you for, uh, allowing me to.
Yeah, sure.
Make that statement, what's that?
Ben, but you didn't vent, you just made a statement, that's right. We've seen you vent before.
Go ahead, Ms. Darby.
I was just noticing that you finally got your lights on two twenty.
Yeah, but look at the day.
Oh, okay.
Yeah?
He's got a slight problem.
I thought maybe you were in the light already, but you're not.
Anyway. That's not what I want to talk to you about.
I, I wanted to get Ms. Nottingham to give us maybe just an update on the salary revision, study revisions, if there's any, I don't, I don't know if there's any yet.
We've not gotten any additional information, uh, since the preliminary, we've sent back, uh, got all the department heads to go through and verify the information that was on there to make sure it was accurate and if there was anything that stood out to them, so we can give that feedback to them. Expect that we should have some more revised draft, um, later this month, so they have been working, um, you know, I've been in contact with him, we had a couple that were left off the list and so things like that, so it's more cleanup.
So, so how many, how many phases are there left to do? Once they get the revisions back, that's one, and what's, what's happening after that?
Well, I think he'll send a, a preliminary final draft to us with all of the data in it, uh, for us to review before he puts his final stamp on it.
Okay, okay, so we're looking at thirty to six days out?
Yes, sir.
Like that, okay.
Yes, the, the contract went through September, but he did say, um, that he thought he would have everything completed by July, so.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
All right, any additional questions for anyone, council? Any announcements? Mayor?
I just, I just want to tell all the citizens and the council and you, President, that there's been a lot of rain, I want everybody to be patient with all the water receding because I know it's been a lot at one time and there are some areas that do get heavy, a lot of rain, a lot of water filled up, so, uh, bear with this, I know all our guys are trying to check out all the ditches and clean up stuff to make it really drain faster, so I just want everybody to be safe.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, nothing else, meeting adjourned.